Okay, so before we were so rudely interrupted, we had just heard from, I want to say, the tax collector had finished up on the business that we're going to be taking care of on May 19th. And I believe we were finished with A and F at that point. If I'm wrong, someone correct me. So we're moving on to Public Works, Mr. Parsick.
Public Works Committee met last Wednesday, the 29th of April. Grant prepared a report, as he always does, that he sent to all of council. I went over that report with him today, and it covers all the highlights of what they've accomplished. And what they've accomplished in light of COVID-19, I think, has been pretty remarkable. And he'll tell you what they are. They're working with personnel shortages. They're working with split shifts. And they're working, they don't have all the protective equipment that they that they need for this coming season. They've ordered it all, and it's coming in in dribs and drabs. So hopefully, when when they need all of it, they'll have it. I think one of the things that wasn't on Grant's report that I read was the compromises reached with the Garden Club on placement of the urns. That's all been figured out for this coming season. And with that, Grant, if you want to go over your report, hit the highlights.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Just a few things each of our departments are working on or have worked on is beaches are being raked every day, five days a week right now. We'll continue to move on to seven days a week as we progress into the summer season. Department also installed all the choppa signs that they purchased. They are at the base of every dune structure for the entrances to the beaches. And we will be placing some signs at the new water garden at the Water Tower parking lot on Thursday, I believe, to indicate what kind of plants that are going to be installed there on that same day. The marina is open. All the docks are in, trailer spaces are ready for those who are bringing their boats in and storing their docks at the marina. The kayak racks are in. There is approximately 120 racks right now. I'm not sure how many have been already requested for use, but we have plenty of racks. The Buildings Department has been cleaning and sanitizing all the buildings on a daily basis, especially because of this COVID-19 issue we're dealing with. They are working on the beach shack to get that open. They've installed Plexiglas in front of the tag office to protect them from the public who would be purchasing beach tags in the near future from that office. They're also getting that beach patrol building ready for the summer season. They are also working on some of the islands. The 95th Street and 3rd Avenue lights in all the trees. The Grounds Department has been pairing the flower beds for the Garden Club, who are going to be planting on the 2nd Avenue Islands. They also placed all the new urns out, as we indicated earlier with Ray. The Grass Department is also cutting all the islands on a weekly basis. They are short-staffed at this point because we are still working on getting all of our PPE equipment in. We're working on scheduling for keeping the employees separated during their lunches and their break times. We only have a small building, so we need to work on that scheduling. Solid waste. We have our bulk spring cleanup on Monday, May 11th. Just want to remind the public that we do not collect brush, paint, pesticides, or home cleaning products during that cleanup. Brush has to be called into our office for pickup. And all the other materials that I mentioned can be taken to the landfill on County Road 610. The local transfer station has been closed because of the pandemic. It is only open to commercial vehicles and not residents at this time. Trash and recycling will continue on a winter schedule. So that means that residents should call our office and leave a message. We are short-staffed in the office at this point, and all messages that are left will be added to our collection list. If we miss you, please call us back, and we'll do our best to retrieve your trash and recycling. The Water and Sewer Department is working on a split shift because of the fact that we don't want our operators infected. If one is infected and the whole crew will have to quarantine for the 14-day period. If we do that, we won't have our operators to maintain our wells and our lift stations. So they are doing their best to maintain our water services and our lift stations. They're also working with our contractors on markouts and the local contractor builders to make sure that their services are installed as soon as possible. I know that we have a lot of new homes coming online within the next couple of weeks. So they have been very patient, and I appreciate that. We've been doing a lot of markouts for Atlantic Electric, South Jersey Gas, fencing company for installations, demolitions of properties, and irrigation installations. So that takes up a lot of time for our Water and Sewer Department. And we're, like I said, we're only working on a split shift. There's only two guys on each week. And we've been pulling guys from other departments to help them out on any of the digs that they're doing to install the new Water and Sewer requests by these new properties that are being built. Tomorrow, we are having a meeting at Borough Hall with a potential vendor for our new Ert meters and collections for our Water and Sewer and for the Utilities Department. That will be going out to bid within the next two weeks. The engineers should have the bid specs ready. And tonight, we will be we'll be voting on the capital projects, and that will be part of those capital projects for the Water and Sewer Department. And that's pretty much all I have.
Anybody have any questions for Grant? You want to move right into Utilities?
That was part of the Utilities as well.
So Utilities is done as well?
Yes.
Okay. Okay.
If I may, just also just have a call out to the Stone Harbor Property Owners Association. Thank you for the signs. I think it'll be a welcome addition as we start to be able to go on the beaches. And I think everyone will be well pleased with those signs. Secondly, just to elaborate on what Grant said, the Ert's are a water meter system. And it's, again, something that needs to be done to update and improve our infrastructure with the Water and Sewer programs.
Thank you, Grant.
Okay, I'm sorry for the delay. We want to make sure that we can get some business conducted in the event we have another interruption. So I'm going to kind of move through the agenda pretty hastily so we can get to the regular meeting and conduct business. So we're going to move right into Paul Kate's has a presentation for outdoor dining changes. Because the problem is, I'm going to have to adjourn this meeting and store a regular meeting. And then adjourn that meeting, the logistics are difficult. So instead, what I'm going to do is we're just going to move as quickly as we can. If you have a question, if it can wait, that would be great. If it can't, please, then that's just fine. But we're going to move as quickly as we can. Outdoor dining, by way of explanation, the outdoor dining was before the Planning Board and was to come before council on this date. And we were prepared to do that and have it for discussion at the last council meeting. However, COVID-19 forced us to cancel the Planning Board meeting where we were going to finalize the ordinance and then push it forward to council for discussion and then for adoption. So as everyone is well aware, I do not like putting something in a work session and then voting on it on the same day. However, the impetus behind this is we want to be in a position in mid-June to allow increased outdoor dining in Stone Harbor in light of COVID-19. And in order to do that, we need to have this ordinance in place. And it takes 48 days for an ordinance to become law. So for that reason, it appears that this ordinance is moving very quickly. It is moving quicker than I like to do things. However, we want to put these businesses in a better position once we start to have some more commerce in town. So with that being said, if Paul Kate's would take over, please?
All right. Good evening, Mayor and Council. So the goal of this ordinance was to make it easier to apply for, receive approval for outdoor dining by enacting uniform standards that if the restaurant meets them, they would qualify to receive the permit. The initial section just deals with that permit process. And then we move into the design standards. I'm going to run through them quick, just so everyone's familiar. The design of the outdoor dining tables and chairs must be consistent with the surrounding architecture and sufficient weight material not to be affected by wind and weather. We're not permitting additional signage or advertisement as part of this ordinance. No table can be greater than six patrons, which equates to about 30 inches by 60 inches. The design and layout of the outdoor dining area should not cause any damage to the Borough or County property. The dining establishment will be responsible for maintaining the highest standards of cleanliness. Dining establishments can utilize the outdoor dining areas between 7:00 a.m. and 10:00 p.m. And everything must be cleaned up and stored no later than midnight. Alcohol will be permitted, consistent with the restaurant's approvals, provided they get the additional approval from the alcohol beverage control. Music will be permitted, provided it meets with the noise levels consistent in the Borough's noise ordinance. No additional lighting would be permitted, with the exception of small candles or table lights. We are not permitting fixed barriers around the outdoor dining area. Food must be purchased inside the establishment or through waitstaff. There won't be outside sales or kiosks permitted as part of this ordinance. The layout of outdoor tables and chairs should not interfere with pedestrian or vehicular safety. Six-foot clear sidewalk must be maintained at all times to not impede foot traffic. And additionally, umbrellas must provide at least a seven-foot clearance beneath them. And then sidewalk dining will be permitted between the curb and building adjacent to the dining establishment, provided they can meet those clearances. Then the ordinance moves into just the application and approval process and the criteria for approving the applications. Things like pedestrian safety, level of pedestrian traffic in the area, vehicular safety, public safety, impact on existing landscape, all those things will be considered when approving the license. There is also an additional insurance and hold harmless agreement they would need to produce. And the violation for not adhering to the standards would be revocation of that permit or license. And then in addition, at the end, the Borough may amend these requirements as necessary due to the current economic conditions due to the COVID crisis. And that's kind of a quick run-through in light of needing to move things on. If there is any questions, I can answer them.
One of the things that we did is we want to be able to change this by resolution so something can move quickly. So once we are up and running again, we can make any changes that perhaps would be just for this summer alone. But we could make those changes temporary. So if anybody has any questions?
Yes, I have a question. We did, back in 2012, address the outdoor dining, and I know I can see some of the changes. And with respect of the social distancing, I am concerned about how many people are going to be on the sidewalks. And now if we're going to be adding tables on the sidewalks with baby coaches and bicycles and all the things that we have no control over. I like outdoor dining, don't get me wrong. But I don't think, I think this is too important to try to rush along. I've noticed, I thought we had an ordinance for open alcoholic beverages in town. I don't know how we can then have open alcoholic beverages outside at a table. I saw the liability, insurance, and everything. So as I said, I'm in favor of it. I think that it is a neat idea to do. I would be curious also, how many businesses have come forward to be interested in this? Because after 2012, I don't think anyone really came forward, other than the fact that really, between the Reed's and their three businesses, which have outdoor backyard tables, we do have them in other places in town, at Adia Street, down at 100 Donna's Place, and all the other places. I'm just curious. I try to be creative. I try to understand how this is going to fit on certain sidewalks with an umbrella. And again, I'm a cheerleader. I'm just not, I don't think we should rush this through. I think this is a big decision, and it's taken a long time to come. And that's my two cents.
So it was not rushed. The Planning Board's been looking at it for at least a year. The only thing rushed is getting it to council. Because we were actually, this would have been discussed the second meeting in April and put on today for the first reading. But since we had to cancel the Planning Board meeting, that we were, we never got to that final approval to send this to council. So as far as rushing it, the Planning Board has not rushed this at all. As a matter of fact, it's been belabored for some time. As far as the social distancing that would have take place this summer, that is, we're going to be seeing that come down from the state. So to go back to my introduction to what we're trying to accomplish here, we will be amending this by resolution to accommodate the present situation. However, we cannot have any of this in place without an ordinance. And it takes 48 days for the ordinance. And that takes us to June 22nd. So if we do not introduce this, then we do not have this on the books to then work with come the third week of June. It's going to push us into the first week of July. The concern at this point is trying to make some sort of compensation for this summer's predicament.
Why don't we use the present ordinance that we have?
Because we've been trying to expand upon it, to be able to put it into the right way, and to be able to put it in more places. Because part of the problem why people have not been taking advantage of this, it's because it's been too stringent. We wanted to, we wanted to be able to give an opportunity to go onto adjacent properties and so on and so forth, and give a little bit more creativity for the restaurants themselves. And also, we streamlined, we wanted to streamline the process so you could go into the zoning office and get your permit.
Okay, I don't understand what you mean when you say adjacent properties.
Well, like, for an example, let's say Jay's on 3rd can go in front of Harbor Bike, if Harbor Bike allowed it. If that other property, on private property, said, "At night, I close it up and it's open, and you are welcome to place tables there." We're hoping, we're thinking forward to what we got to do this summer. So that's some of the things that we would be adding. We're trying to figure out how to get as many people outside as possible.
But that adjacent is not part of this ordinance.
But we could make it by resolution, and it could only be good for this summer, too. Because that's the other thing, is we can make it only for the length of this crisis. Because we also, at this point, we don't know how many visitors we're going to have this summer. So, God willing, we have a lot. And God willing, everything moves well, and everybody stays healthy, and we start to be able to get some semblance of summer. One of the ways to do that is we're going to need to get people outside. So what we would do is we would have this in effect, and we would relax some of these restrictions for this summer alone by resolution. Maybe allow five feet this summer and revert back to six feet next summer. We're also, all of this outdoor dining is also going to be regulated by the state. So if the state's telling you that you can bring, if you lose 50% of your tables, and you can bring them now outside, but they have to be six feet from each other, our restaurants don't have that kind of room. But if the neighboring property is willing to work with them, and if the Borough is willing to work with the restaurant, then we can get some more people outside.
Mayor, may I make a comment?
Sure.
I really think what's at the heart of this matter is the economic viability of our downtown. And I would hope that anything we can do to aid our downtown businesses within our ability, that we would do that. This is a tremendous economic hardship for many, many people, including our downtown business community, which, quite frankly, is vibrant. And we've been wanting a business community like this for many, many years. Governor Murphy has talked in terms of 50% capacity for restaurants with social distancing in place for dining. And I believe that this outdoor dining is, quite frankly, a tremendous solution to what we're facing.
I don't want to repeat what Mrs. Rich said. I'm in favor of outside dining as well. But, and I'm glad to hear what you said, Mayor, regarding amending this. Because as it's written right now, naturally, this doesn't comply with any social distancing requirements. Now, as long as everybody realizes that, so that once these requirements begin to get relaxed or lifted, we have to act accordingly and ease into this through resolution. See, when I was reviewing this today, I wasn't aware that that was the approach. So then, we do that to make sure that the social distancing requirements are being met going forward, correct?
Correct.
So I think, I think some of the things in here, the two things I was glad to see is, like Paul already mentioned, was the fact there's adequate insurance provisions in here for liability. And it's, it also makes it very clear, I think in the third or fourth paragraph, that this ordinance is subject to being amended or even revoked. So the people that are going to take advantage of this realize this. Because the first year, and even the second year with no state distancing requirements, the Borough is going to learn a lot from this after seeing it work for a season. And we're going to be able to adjust and amend whatever needs to be done. So, you know, we are working in some cases with some very tight spaces. So as long as we all realize that, that this is almost like a trial, and if we pass it through, it's going to be subject to amendments as soon as we hear what the state needs.
Right.
That's, I think, you know, we're approaching it the right way.
Because even those places that have outdoor dining right now, like Josie mentioned, the Reed's, and Fred's has their porch, and things of that nature, you're not going to see all those tables filled. They're going to be all six feet from one another, and so on and so forth. So there's no way we're going to have tables outside within, people sitting within six feet of one another. That's going to, whether you're, even once you're outside, the six feet is still going to be maintained.
And, well, and as long as that distance is maintained, you know, or there's going to be some restaurants in town, I believe, who can comply with this ordinance as written, but they can't comply with any social distancing measures on top of it. So they're going to have to wait till it's totally lifted before they can take advantage of this.
Or, like I said, they wouldn't be able to take advantage of it this summer as written. But by resolution, we would allow them to perhaps use the adjacent property. But only while we're going through this. And then by resolution, that would all become revoked. As soon as the, as soon as, like, the state executive orders are cleared, and as soon as that is no longer something that we have to abide by, then we revert to this as written. And then you could not use the adjacent property or any special recommendations that we may use this summer in light of this situation. Anybody else have any other questions or comments? So we'll bring it forward at the meeting for first reading. And there still is, for anybody who has concerns or questions, you can still email them. There will be a public hearing on this at the second, third, and final reading, which will be the first meeting in June. So, thank you, Paul. Next is to discuss a resolution to change the date for when the beach tag price goes up. And the discussion is perhaps that we hold that preseason rate through the month of June. And on July 1 is when the season rate would go up. And this is something that Avalon is doing. And just by way of reminder, our tags are reciprocal with Avalon. So if anybody's got any comments, concerns on that.
No concerns, it's just a good idea.
And this is something we can do by resolution. Everybody's good with that? Okay? Okay, so what I need then is a motion to adjourn, and then we're going to move right into the regular council meeting. So, motion to adjourn.
So moved.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We're adjourned. We're now going to move right into the regular meeting. The meeting is now called to order. Clerk, call the roll.
Mr. Dahlahan?
Here.
Mrs. Gensimer?
Here.
Mr. Craftcheck?
Mr. Moore?
Here.
Mr. Parsick?
Here.
Mrs. Rich?
I did not hear Mr. Craftcheck.
He did not answer.
He did not answer. Be just a minute. Be just a minute. Still Sam. Charles is joining. Okay. Thank you, Ken. You want Charles? Oh, I see him. Charles?
I'm here.
Okay, clerk, please note, Mr. Kraftcheck is now here. The meeting is now open. Adequate notice of the meeting was provided by posting a copy of the time and place on the municipal clerk's bulletin board and mailing a copy of same to the press and the Cape County Herald on April 16, 2020. For the record, this council meeting is held via video/telephone conference call on Zoom. Will everyone please rise to salute the flag? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Clerk, do we have any communications?
No, Mayor, we don't.
I'm now going to have public comment. Anyone wishing to address my own counsel may do so at this time by raising your hand electronically. If you're in the meeting via video, click on the appropriate location. If you are participating via telephone, please hit star nine. When called upon, you will state your name and address for the record. Please make sure to mute your device after your question is answered. To mute your device, you will need to hit star six. For the purpose of this particular meeting, any questions at this time that are COVID-19 related, I'm going to ask you to not ask those questions till the end of the meeting where you will hear from me and you will hear from the Office of Emergency Management. Many of your questions may be answered through our reports. So for this public comment, if anybody has any questions regarding the agenda, any items on the agenda, but not questions directly related to COVID-19, please raise your hand and I shall call upon you. And I'm going to use Mrs. Gensimer to help me identify any hands that may be raised.
Sam Thomas?
Thank you. I just wanted to speak in support of the resolution to authorize permitting in the design phase for 111th and 114th Street Outfall Elimination. As many on council know, I've been advocating for this work to be done since 2007, when the original plan to remove all of the outfall pipes was moved forward. And I revisited that a number of times over the past 10 years in particular, but particularly since Superstorm Sandy, when we had extensive flooding. We have made progress because part of the work at the First Avenue and 111th Street intersection up to the beach has been completed and it has taken care of most flooding events. But we do need to complete the work so that we're protected from hurricane events. This is, this intersection is the lowest point on First Avenue in the entire borough and we have had water trapped here when we have a high tide event and a storm. Particularly pleased to see the the thought of having retention using the paper street in front of Villa Maria and perhaps the paper street of 112th Street, which may in fact be paved in the future. I think those are good solutions to minimize the amount of water that ever goes back to the bay for the health issues, just as we don't want it going out to the to the beach. Well, I think the time has come. This part of the project, which is the sole remaining, the sole remaining outfall pipes has been delayed for nearly 15 years.
Thank you, Sam. Just do me one favor, please, and just state your full name and address for the record.
I apologize. Samuel Thomas. I'm a resident at 100, 111th Street, which is the corner of First Avenue and 111th Street.
Thank you. I knew you would be pleased with this.
I'll be pleased when it's finished.
Yeah. Is there anyone else who would like to address Mayor and Council? I'm not seeing anyone. Jennifer, are you?
No, Mayor.
Okay, thank you. All right, seeing no one, I will close the first public comment. Ordinance 1568.
Madam Mayor, I move that ordinance 1568 be taken up on first reading.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
I'm going to abstain.
This ordinance is the outdoor dining ordinance, which was recently discussed. I apologize, I was not on that portion of the work session. I was waiting for a new dial-in code and and it announced to me that we were supposed to dial back in, so I apologize. That being said, the outdoor dining ordinance is reflective of what was, I assume, recently discussed in the work session.
Will the clerk read the title only of ordinance 1568 on first reading?
Ordinance of the Borough of Stone Harbor County, Cape May, New Jersey, establishing regulations and process for obtaining an outdoor dining license within the Borough of Stone Harbor.
Madam Mayor, I move that ordinance 1568 be passed on first reading, published according to law, and that it be taken up on second, third, and final reading. Adoption at a meeting of mayor and council to be held on the
Second day of June.
Second day of June, 2020.
Second. Clerk call the roll.
Mr. Dahlahan?
Yes.
Mrs. Gensimer?
Yes.
Mr. Kraftcheck?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Parzic?
Yes.
Mrs. Rich?
Abstain.
Ordinance 1566.
Madam Mayor, I move that ordinance 1566 be taken up on second reading.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Will the clerk read the title only of ordinance 1566 on second reading?
On the ordinance appropriating $10,267,000 and authorizing the issuance of $9,753,650 bonds or notes of the borough for various improvements or purposes authorized to be taken by the Borough of Stone Harbor.
Public hearing on ordinance 1566 is open. I see no hands raised. Public hearing on ordinance 1566 is closed.
Madam Mayor, before we move further to second, and it's the third and final reading, I'd like by way of explanation for the public who's on here to further explain this bond ordinance and break it down just a tad bit further. I did have several calls with regard to one portion in particular, which relates to the new Beach Patrol Headquarters. If we break this ordinance down, there is roughly 263,000 related to additional dump truck, solid waste packer, 4 million related to storm water management drainage facilities, 285,000 for the installation of equipment, including modular restroom, the 4.1 million towards the new beach headquarters, and finally, 1,619,000 related to borough construction and reconstruction surfacing of roads. I wanted to make clear, and we discussed this at previous meetings, that the beach headquarters, the figure associated with the beach headquarters is an early estimated figure. And we have discussed in many recent meetings that by all accounts, council has agreed that this figure should hopefully be reduced significantly by removing portions of that project or curtailling them in in serious part. That being said, perhaps Jim Kraft, our CFO, could jump on here for a minute and explain that once again, that that 4.1 million does not mean that we are immediately borrowing that money, nor are we committed to spending that kind of money related to that project. Could you jump in, Jim?
Absolutely. Yes, so that is just a, an allocation. It doesn't, when the project is complete and while the while the project is going on, at some point, we will issue bond anticipation notes, but we will not issue any more than what we've already spent at that time. And then when the project is complete, we will issue a bond. We will cancel any balance left in this ordinance and the bond will be for any balance that's 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 out there.
Jim, is it fair to say that this authorizes the borough to go out and seek that amount should it need it? But in no sense are we going out and actually securing those funds and paying interest in on them or any portion thereof at this time?
Correct.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Madam Mayor, I move that ordinance 1566 be passed on second reading and advanced to third and final reading.
Second.
Clerk call the roll.
Mr. Dahlahan?
Yes.
Mrs. Gensimer?
Yes.
Mr. Kraftcheck?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Parzic?
Yes.
Mrs. Rich?
Yes.
Will the clerk read the title only of ordinance 1566 on third and final reading?
On the ordinance appropriating $10,267,000 and authorizing the issuance of $9,753,650 bonds or notes of the borough for various improvements or purposes authorized to be undertaken by the Borough of Stone Harbor.
Madam Mayor, I move that ordinance 1566 be passed on third and final reading, adopted and published according to law.
Second.
Clerk call the roll. Mr. Dahlahan?
Yes.
Mrs. Gensimer?
Yes.
Mr. Kraftcheck?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Parzic?
Yes.
Mrs. Rich?
Did you guess that too?
Mrs. Rich?
Yes.
Ordinance 1567.
Madam Mayor and Council, I move that ordinance 1567 be taken up on the second reading. It's regarding the water and sewer improvements and ordinance.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Will the clerk read the title only of ordinance 1567 on second reading?
Bond ordinance appropriating $4,356,000 and authorizing the issuance of $4,356,000 bonds or notes of the borough for various water and sewer improvements within the borough.
Public hearing on ordinance 1567 is open. Public hearing is closed.
Madam Mayor and Council, I offer motion 1567 be passed on the second reading, advanced to the third and the final reading. I also would like to just outline the summary of the of the charges, of the cost, the estimated cost for the the bond. What number one is $2,316,000 for a water and sewage system and improvements on various streets. Second is the water and sewer system with the upgrade of the water meters, which was the ERT system that Grant Russ spoke of. That's $1,200,000. Third is improvement of the water tower and the reservoir. It's $450,000. And then also improvement of the water wells and the water plant, including rehabilitation and the renovation, $140,000. And last is the improvement of the outfall structure system in the borough by upgrading the valves together with the infrastructure. That's $250,000. The total is $4,356,000.
Second.
Clerk call the roll. Mr. Dahlahan?
Yes.
Mrs. Gensimer?
Yes.
Kraftcheck?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Parzic?
Yes.
Mrs. Rich?
Yes.
Will the clerk read the title only of ordinance 1567 on third and final reading?
Bond ordinance appropriating $4,356,000 and authorizing the issuance of $4,356,000 bonds or notes of the Borough of Stone Harbor for various water and sewer system improvements.
So Madam Mayor and Council, I move that ordinance 1567 be passed on the third and final reading, adopted and published according to law.
Second.
Clerk call the roll.
Mr. Dahlahan?
Yes.
Gensimer?
Yes.
Kraftcheck?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Parzic?
Yes.
Mrs. Rich?
Yes.
Resolution 2020 S 96.
Madam Mayor and Council, I offer resolution 2020-F-S-96 for adoption.
Second.
This resolution involves the approval to submit a grant application and execute a grant contract with the New Jersey Department of Transportation for the reconstruction of 83rd, of the 83rd Street project.
And discussion? Clerk call the roll.
Mr. Dahlahan?
Yes.
Mrs. Gensimer?
Yes.
Mr. Kraftcheck?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Parzic?
Yes.
Mrs. Rich?
Yes.
Resolution 2020 S 97.
I'd like to offer a resolution 2020 S 97 for adoption.
Second.
Can't hear you, Josie.
This is our resolution for a professional service contract that we have with Shore Counseling Service. It runs from June 2020 to May 21. The amount is $2,781.
And discussion? Clerk call the roll.
Mr. Dahlahan?
Yes.
Gensimer?
Yes.
Mr. Kraftcheck?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Parzic?
Yes.
Mrs. Rich?
Yes.
Resolution 2020 S 98.
Madam Mayor, I offer resolution 2020-S-98 for adoption. It's a refund for an arts and crafts festival site fee for a fine artist due to COVID-19 concerns. Second.
And discussion? Clerk call the roll.
Mr. Dahlahan?
Yes.
Mrs. Gensimer?
Yes.
Kraftcheck?
Yeah.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Parzic?
Yes.
Mrs. Rich?
Yes.
Resolution 2020 S 99.
Madam Mayor, I offer resolution 2020-S-99 for adoption. It refunds a fitness retreat event fee that was to be held in May. And and it was canceled due to our current period of self-isolation.
Second.
And discussion? Clerk call the roll.
Mr. Dahlahan?
Yes.
Mrs. Gensimer?
Yes.
Kraftcheck?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Parzic?
Yes.
Mrs. Rich?
Yes.
Resolution 2020 S 100.
I'd like to offer resolution 2020 S 100 for adoption.
Second.
This is our resolution for our flood insurance for Landed Cape Multi Program. It has to do with our FEMA and that's pretty much it. Very important.
And discussion? Clerk call the roll.
Mr. Dahlahan?
Yes.
Gensimer?
Yes.
Mr. Kraftcheck?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Parzic?
Yes.
Mrs. Rich?
Yes.
Resolution 2020 S 101.
Madam Mayor, I offer resolution 2020-S-101 for adoption.
Second.
This rest, this resolution authorizes the refund of a surety maintenance to Jersey Shore Properties LO in the amount of Shore Properties LO in the amount of $3,400. For those on this call who don't understand what that means, it, builders, developers must deposit with the borough a surety that they will perform certain work associated with a street opening, and this money is deposited with the borough to ensure that that work is done correctly. After it is done correctly, it is refunded to the developer or builder. And in this case, it was determined that that work was done properly, and therefore it should be refunded.
Any discussion? Clerk call the roll.
Mr. Dahlahan?
Yes.
Mrs. Gensimer?
Yes.
Kraftcheck?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Parsick?
Yes.
Mrs. Rich?
Yes.
Resolution 2020 S-102.
Mayor and Council, I offer Resolution 2020-S-102, the Law Enforcement Records Management Program. This is a program that allows the pooling of information, information sharing with other localities.
Any discussion? Oh, did I get a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Clerk call the roll.
Mr. Dahlahan?
Yes.
Mrs. Gensimer?
Yes.
Kraftcheck?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Parsick?
Yes.
Mrs. Rich?
Yes.
Resolution 2020 S-103.
Mayor and Council, I offer Resolution 2020-S-103 for adoption.
Second.
This, this extends the second quarter grace period for taxes to 1 June 2020.
Any discussion? Clerk call the roll.
Mr. Dahlahan?
Yes.
Mrs. Gensimer?
Yes.
Kraftcheck?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Parsick?
Yes.
Mrs. Rich?
Yes.
Resolution 2020 S-104.
Madam Mayor and Council, I offer Resolution 2020-S-104 for adoption.
Second.
I'm pleased to offer this resolution that approves the proposal in the design phase of the 111th Street and 114th Street. Beach outfall elimination total is $90,000 for this work.
Any discussion? Clerk call the roll.
Mr. Dahlahan?
Yes.
Mrs. Gensimer?
Yes.
Kraftcheck?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Parsick?
Yes.
Mrs. Rich?
Yes.
Resolution 2020 S-105.
Mayor and Council, I offer Resolution 2020-S-105, which calls for the change in dates for the purchase of preseason beach tags.
Second.
Any discussion? Clerk call the roll.
Mr. Dahlahan?
Yes.
Mrs. Gensimer?
Yes.
Mr. Kraftcheck?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Parsick?
Yes.
Mrs. Rich?
Yes.
I need a motion approving a special event for the Philadelphia White Marsh Rugby Tournament.
No move.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Closed. Okay, that gets us through our agenda safely. I'm, I'm going to bring everybody up to speed on a couple of things that have taken place, and it's kind of amazing how this, literally this COVID-19 situation changes on a dime. In the space of the time since we started our initial meeting, we've received two important pieces of information. So that's been since 4:30. So, just before I get started, I want to again acknowledge and thank the borough employees who continue to work under these circumstances, making sure that the day-to-day operations of our government continue. Special thanks to the folks at DPW, Department of Public Works, for continuing to get the job done. Thanks to the administrative personnel for everything you do daily, both from home and from the office. Special thanks, as always, to the first responders, police, fire, emergency medical services for another two weeks of commitment to health and safety of our residents and visitors. I'd also like to acknowledge those employees who are doing double duty, and by that, I mean those employees who are doing their jobs for the borough while also homeschooling their children. Not an easy task, and as we all know, it's one that's going to continue for this academic year. So by now, I think most of you, if not everyone, is aware that this Friday morning, May 8th, our beaches will be open for exercise. You may walk, run, fish, and surf. It's going to be the same on the Seven Mile Island. Hobie cats can be launched at the 123rd Street Beach in the manner that is outlined by ordinance. Lifeguards will be monitoring the beach and ensuring that those they encounter are practicing social distancing, not congregating in groups or violating any of the rules temporarily put in place. At this time, I'm hopeful the beach will be open on Memorial Day weekend for sitting and sunbathing. The state is going to be sharing guidelines on this. This is information that I got probably about quarter to six following a regional call with Cape May County, Atlantic County, and Monmouth County, no, Ocean County. At that time, those mayors, this was during our meeting, the mayors on that call were advised that we are to expect guidelines on the beaches from the state and that the state's attorneys are meeting on this issue tonight. So I anticipate we should get something soon then. I also just like to emphasize always, at this time, this is the situation at this time. I'd like to emphasize a lot of what goes on depends on a couple of things. Like I said, the state guidelines, as well as the ability of our beach patrol to effectively guard our beaches in this, in the safe and professional manner that they always have done in the past. As everyone is aware, the situation is fluid, and we're constantly adjusting to changes in data and health reports. I'm hopeful that we will see a relaxation of the state's stay-at-home order, which we are all presently required by law to adhere to, and still by the time Memorial Day weekend arrives, we may still be under it. We have yet to see. One thing I do anticipate is that one prohibition that will remain in place is the congregating of 10 or more people in one group. I anticipate seeing that stay in place. It saddens me to report that the traditional American Legion Memorial Day Parade is canceled, and so is their open house that they always have at the Legion post. In addition, the traditional opening of the beach for the summer season, which we've been holding on noon Saturday of Memorial Day weekend, that's canceled as well. The Fire Company's annual recognition of fallen heroes will be closed to the public. The farmer's market will open this summer, however, that opening is delayed until Sunday, June 21st. Five vendors have opted not to return to the market this year, which allows for more space between vendors. We anticipate that a designated entrance and exit to the market will be set in the 200 block of 95th Street, where the apron cuts into the knee wall into the parking lot. Shoppers will be able to move about the market in a counterclockwise fashion and exit at the same place where they enter. It'll be monitored like you see now in the ACTME. There'll be a certain amount of people permitted into the market at one time, and as they file out, others will file in, and of course, social distancing will be in place, signage will be in place, et cetera. So as I'm sure you, most of you, if not everyone, again, is aware, the governor announced yesterday that schools will stay closed for the remainder of the academic year. Currently, Executive Order 107 still remains in effect, and this is the stay-at-home order signed by the governor on March 21st stating, "All New Jersey residents shall remain at home or at their place of residence unless they are leaving for what amounts to be essential reasons or to engage in outdoor exercise." The Cape May County Freeholder Board just today changed the guidelines on short-term rentals. They passed this resolution about 3:30 today. So what their resolution has moved to is that rentals for a duration of greater than 30 days shall be permitted effective May 11th. So 30 days and more effective May 11th. Rentals for a duration of less than 30 days shall be permitted effective June 1st. Hotels and motels may operate at a capacity of 60% of its full capacity effective June 1st. Hotels and motels may operate at full capacity effective June 22nd. Now, these particular guidelines for the rentals, they are, they, they're the same as a document that was sent up to the governor today, and I'm going to explain what that Last meeting, I reported on the formation of what was called at the time, the Cape May County Business Recovery Task Force. And that task force was created to facilitate the opening of Cape May County. The task force has since regrouped, renamed, and it's now called the Cape May Countywide Recovery Initiative. And the mission of the recovery initiative is to optimize and support economic recovery and the safe and thoughtful reopening of public places. As we are aware, the governor has spoke about creating a statewide plan to open New Jersey. It is the mission of this task force to convince the governor that a regional approach to opening New Jersey makes more sense than a statewide plan. Cape May County, we all know this, is remarkably different than Bergen County, Hudson County, Essex County, and so on. I'm hopeful that the governor and his closest advisors agree that a regional approach makes sense. So who is on the task force and what have they done? As I reported two weeks ago, the task force is chaired by two freeholders, Will Mori and Linda Zidario. In addition, representatives from the following industries are on the task force. Agriculture and wineries, breweries, campgrounds, commercial fishing, construction and building, lodging, real estate, retail, restaurants, sightseeing and party boats, and technology. The county planning board, county department of economic development, and county department of tourism are represented as well. Also at the table is the president of the Cape May County, the Cape May County Chamber of Commerce, representing a multitude of small businesses throughout the county. It is also important to emphasize that this task force consulted with the Department of Health and Cape Regional Medical Center during deliberations and while crafting a proposal for Cape May County to reopen. That proposal was forwarded to the governor and his chief of staff today. It is a thoughtful and progressive proposal that protects the health and welfare of county residents, that also responsibly gets businesses up and running. It is also noteworthy to share that the Seven Mile Island is represented by four different business owners from various industries. We have representation from retail, construction, sightseeing, party boats, and personal care. These businesses are the Fudge Kitchen, DL Miner, the Miss Avalon, and Solana Leap. So, this proposal that went to the governor included the resolution that the freeholders just passed on those short-term rental guidelines, for lack of a better word. And as you will recall, we adopted the resolution that the freeholders had passed. So we have been following that resolution, and that has been rescinded, and that resolution has been replaced by a new resolution, which, number one, supports the Cape May Countywide Initiative proposal, as well as supports those dates for the short-term rentals. Now, in addition, Executive Order 107 also lists essential businesses which can remain open. If your business does not fall into one of those categories, then it is still under executive order to remain closed. The executive order specifically states that the brick and mortar premises of all non-essential retail businesses must close to the public as long as this order remains in effect. We've started to see an uptick of non-essential businesses in town violating this order. According to the order, these stores must be closed entirely, and only online sales may continue. Non-essential retail stores cannot have shopping by appointment. I'm hoping that this message gets to members of the Chamber of Commerce, and I'm asking the business owners to please not put our police officers in a situation where they need to advise a business that they are in violation of an executive order. Our local police did not write these executive orders and prohibitions, however, they are required by law to enforce them. I recognize the enormous impact, the enormous economic impact and hit that our country, our state, and our local businesses are taking. I recognize that our summer season is upon us, and that our businesses remain under executive order to remain closed. My opinion, I do believe it is time the state permitted our businesses to open with protocols and ensure the health and welfare of patrons while allowing the businesses to operate. However, legally, that is not my call. That is the governor's call. We are a land of law and order. I'm asking our businesses to please not violate the executive order in place, and please do not force a police response. It's my hope that relief will soon be given to non-essential businesses so they may open and conduct business. Now, is my hope grounded in anything specific? It is. Number one is the proposal that has gone up to the governor's office today, which is asking for relief for these non-essential businesses. And number two, during the governor's regular press briefing today at 1 o'clock, he stated that non-essential businesses are being looked at right now and are on the list to see what can be done. Stated it just today. I'm just asking that we do not put our police officers in any kind of a position that leads to anything that, let's say, Stone Harbor would not be proud of. And again, I recognize these are tough times, and I recognize the sacrifice this business community is making. I recognize that.
She also was a 20-year veteran of the police department.
So somebody's not muted. So I'm just asking that everybody continue to work together through this crisis. I think relief is on the way. I recognize and appreciate that residents have been under this state-at-home order for 45 days now. We all seem to be locked in this surreal apocalyptic world with no end in sight. I assure you, and it is evident by the resolutions that were passed at the freeholders' office today, local business leaders and elected officials throughout this county are working nonstop to save some semblance of our local economy and to restore some sense of normalcy while maintaining health, safety, and order. And we all know this is not an easy task. So if JT, if you have anything to add?
Mayor, by way of further encouragement, the governor has responded to the freeholders, and they're actually scheduled to have a conference call this evening at 8:00 PM. So the process is moving forward with diligence on both sides, and that's an encouraging thing that he has responded that quickly.
That's very encouraging. Thank you. And as I said, as I prefaced this with, change it every five, 10 minutes. We're getting notified of something new. So that's very encouraging news, encouraging news for our business district and for our community, for our county. So JT?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I don't have much else really to offer, but just to bring council up to speed on the current numbers, we have had a total of 379 positive cases of the coronavirus in the county. We right now have 102 active cases to date. The borough of Stone Harbor has not had a single case. Unfortunately, we have had 27 total deaths. 19 of those have been at long-term care facilities. As the mayor said, when we do start to relax some things, we, we hope to see that our residents are doing the right thing and not putting our police in a position where they have to respond. I will tell you that some of the businesses have been pushing the envelope, and it's really not fair to the other businesses that are doing the right thing, and it does require a law enforcement response. So we would please encourage the businesses. If you're not sure if you're an essential business, you can contact the attorney general's office, and they will be able to provide you with some direction on that. Again, appointment shopping is not permitted. I've seen several posts on social media that have been brought to my attention about this. This has to do with people interpreting the open-to-public language, which is in Executive Order 107. Mayor, that's, that's all that I have. I look forward to getting I look forward to getting back on the beach on Wednesday, or excuse me, on Friday.
So, Public Works will be removing all the barriers in the next couple of days that were put up, and the beach will be open. And I just look forward to it being the beginning of us opening in a safe manner and proceeding from here. With that, I will now have public comment. Anyone wishing to address mayor and council may do so at this time by electronically raising your hand. And if you're on the phone, please hit store nine.
Sandy Slabek.
Let me find her. Hi, Sandy. Not able to unmute, unmute you. Kim, are you on?
I am, and I am trying to unmute her. She tried to ask her to please press her spacebar.
There she is. Go ahead, Sandy. State your name and address for the record, please.
Sandy Slabek, 323 84th Street. I'd just like to publicly thank Public Works for the garden club with all that they are doing to help us in this confusing time of still trying to provide flowers to everybody with their shorthanded staff and all the extra things they have to do. They still have helped us do everything we need to get this flower delivery program off, which will start on Thursday, and getting the flowers for us tomorrow. So, Grant, thank you to you and your staff. Thank you.
Thank you, Grant. Thank you, Sandy. So, anyone else who would like to address mayor and council? I'm looking.
Mayor Marty would like to address mayor and council, so give me one second.
Okay. Okay, Marty, you're unmuted. Can you hear us, Marty? I see her. She appears to be unmuted. Marty, can you hear us?
Mayor, I don't see her on anymore.
Okay. Okay. Maybe she somehow left instead of unmuting. So, anyone else who would like to address mayor and council?
She says she's here. Let me see if I can get her on.
Okay, while we wait... Well, no, forget that. We'll wait a minute. Is there anyone else who would like to address mayor and council while we do that? While we see if we can get Marty? And help me out, Jen.
Madam Mayor, do you mind if I excuse myself? I have to get to the firehouse for my evening shift.
Your excuse, sir.
I apologize. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you. Thank you for everything. I'm not seeing anyone else.
I'm not seeing anyone.
And I'm still looking. I'm flipping around for Marty. And I don't... I see her on here, and I see that it's unmuted, but... Yeah, I am... She is asking to call in. All right, so, let her in. How do we do that? I'm gonna go to my participants and see what I can do. I don't see her on.
She is on, Mayor. She's calling now.
Sure is. You on, Marty? Go ahead, Marty.
Hi, everyone. Sorry about that. I'm on my keys, please, and can't figure it out. First, I just wanted to thank the mayor for addressing the essential and non-essential business situation today. And I was hoping that I can share the statement that you read about the executive order through an email with our chamber members. We, the chamber, understand that it's not...
Marty, do you still have your computer on? You may want to turn it off.
Okay.
Because you're getting a lot of echo.
Okay. I am just hoping that I can email Mayor Judy and ask her to share her statement with me so that I can email it to our chamber members regarding following the rules and being respectful of the police department and the borough, et cetera.
That's not a problem at all, Marty. I'll send it to you tonight.
Terrific. I appreciate it.
And it also, Marty, it will be part of the minutes of this meeting as well.
Marty, terrific. And as you mentioned, things are happening so quickly. I would just love to get something out tonight or tomorrow morning regarding the new shopping or appointments. You know, we're seeing so much online through social media of our member businesses asking people to come shop. And we just want everyone to be on the same page and, you know, be each other's support and do the same thing.
Right. And that's understood. And the chamber has been our partner in this. So, that's why, you know, it's just important that everybody just continue to hang tough and work through this together, because I do believe we're going to see some relief for the businesses relatively soon. Again, though, you know, I hate to even say that because everything changes on a dime. However, out of the gates back in March, the chamber was extremely responsive. Right where we were, we jumped on this very quickly. The chamber canceled the shiver and reacted quickly. And we were very appreciative of that. We've been very appreciative of everything along the line that has been happening, you know, as far as the businesses. And I understand, I can see how this has snowballed. I can certainly see how it has. And it is, it's... And meanwhile, the police officers are... We're all in the same boat together, and nobody wants to come to the... To your... To any store and tell them they have to close. Nobody wants to even see the store shuttered. So, we'll continue to work together. We'll continue to hope that relief is right around the bend. And I will make my... I'll let you have these facts as far as what Executive Order 107 actually says. Marty thanked everybody. I don't know if you guys heard it. Okay. All right, thank you, Marty. So, anyone else who would like to address mayor and council? As I flip through, I can see people are dropping. Okay, Jen, you don't see anybody?
No, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Before we go, oh, stand by. Bunny, pardon. Laughing her hand. Go ahead, Bunny.
Hi, I just... So, the freeholders are going with their resolution to the governor. So, nothing... Now, does the governor have to agree with this resolution?
It is my understanding, and we do still have Mark Caravan on the line, so he can clarify it, is my understanding that the beaches and short-term rentals were left to the local municipalities. And as you will remember, we were advocating for that regional approach, and we followed the lead of the county.
Yes.
I feel it's in our best interest to continue to do so. And what is going on now is the resolution, the... And again, Marcus can correct me if I'm wrong. The resolution that they passed just today, it supports the entire recovery proposal, and it calls for those guidelines on the short-term rentals that I read. And that was passed today. So, that being said, Mark Caravan, if you could please tell me, do we have to do anything? Do we have to do anything officially? Or since we were under the one resolution, we just roll with this resolution?
At this juncture, we don't need to do anything officially. And for those of you that are curious and interested in reading the package that was sent to the governor, it is available on Middle Township's website. There's a link to it, so you can see the entire recovery plan. It's rather detailed. It's very well done. And it lays out a rational and thoughtful way to get into this in stages. So, you can read it on that website, and it'll give you a lot more information.
Mr. Caravan, is there any way that it could be posted on the Borough of Stone Harbor's website for our residents?
Yeah, I have a copy of it in a digital link that I can send to Kim to post on the Borough's website. We can do that.
Thank you very much.
And just so you are aware, like we prefaced this meeting, things happen on a dime. It was literally prepared, done, sent to the governor today.
Yes.
Finished proposal went today.
Sent to Senator Testa. I think Senator Sweeney has it. Senator Sweeney said that he's going to be very helpful in trying to help us get open. So, we have a lot of support, but we will see that it's posted on the Borough website.
Okay, but the short-term rentals and the beach part of it, we feel as if we've got authority over those two parts. The part that we don't really have authority over, but we've got a proposal, is for the non-essential businesses. Is that correct?
It's really, Bunny, it's for everything. It includes occupancy within restaurants. It's an all-encompassing plan. It is a proposal. It is everything. Now, here's the one... We were originally, yes, the municipalities were given the authority as far as short-term rentals and the beaches. However, just today, on a call with staff from the governor's office, the governor's staff stated that there's going to be guidelines concerning the opening of the beaches. So, I do not know what to expect from there. Some of the things that I have heard being tossed around are similar to kind of what they did at the state parks, where half of a parking lot gets roped off to keep numbers down. Things like that. I do not know if we're going to see that. We're not. I'm hoping that we do not. I'm hoping we continue to have that kind of jurisdiction and authority over our own... The beaches, as far as that's concerned. When you're talking a state park, and there's nowhere to park within two or three miles, but if we rope off a parking lot, it's just going to push cars into the residential neighborhoods. So, I don't know that that's any way of discouraging the amount of people that would go to the beach. It might work in a rural area, but I don't know how it would here. You're just going to park on the street. So, we may not see anything of that effect, or we... It's just that was the information that was given this afternoon or this evening. We may be seeing some guidelines from the state.
But if it is the plan of the freeholders to continue the ban on short-term rentals, except for longer than six weeks, through Memorial Day, through the May 30th, so those two weeks, we can really count out not having short-term rental check-ins during those...
That's correct.
Yes. Yes. Yes.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Hey, I do have someone that was wishing to speak. Okay. Where are they? Oh, Derek, you can speak.
Yeah, hi.
Name and address for the record, please.
Yeah, Derek Mix, 27 Weber Court. I asked a question about the beaches last time, and I guess I'm happy that, you know, we're seeing some progress on that front. I would just point out that, you know, even during busy summer weekends, it's relatively easy to, you know, mark off a space that is at least 6, 10 feet, pick whatever distance it is, you know, from other people on the beaches. And it seems to me, I just... I guess I'm not understanding really the rationale for why we're opening up only partially for exercise at this point. We have, like, not great weather. There's not a lot of people down. There's a stay-at-home order. There are restrictions on hotels and short-term rentals. So, really, I mean, I guess I'm just wondering what the rationale is for only a partial opening and what criteria you would set forth for a full opening.
Well, the rationale is we are at a... We are still under the executive order to stay at home. So, you're to go out, exercise, and go home. We're all under a stay-at-home order. We're supposed to be going out for essential reasons only, or to get exercise. So, it's a place to get your exercise. I think that a lot of people are not remembering the fact that we are all still under the executive order to stay at home, except if you are procuring essential services and goods, or you're exercising. Now, my hope is, and I do feel like there is hope on the horizon, is that executive order will be lifted to some degree, and then that allows somebody to be on the beach all day. They don't have to stay at home, but we are under an order to stay at home.
It seems like a picnic blanket or something would be, you know... Or even just swimming, right? Not surfing. I mean, swimming's exercise. Anyway.
You can surf.
I just... Right, I get it.
Yeah, you can surf. What I'm saying is it's... We are under an executive order right now. The entire state of New Jersey is.
Look, I understand that.
That's the rationale.
And I would think that most people are, you know, complying with that.
Yes.
And so then, what is... Is the lifting of the stay-at-home order really the bar that you're looking at as far as?
That's what I'm hopeful... That's what I'm hopeful for, yes. The relaxing of some of those prohibitions, yes. That's what I'm hoping for, that we will see in the next couple of weeks. Hopefully, by Memorial Day weekend. But we'll see. And again, like the solicitor said, we know that the freeholders' proposal has gone to the governor. We know we're getting attention for this region. We're being proactive, and I'm just asking for just a little... And I know it's asking a lot, honestly. I really do know this. Just a little bit more patience, because I really feel like we're going to see some movement.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. So, anyone else who would like to address mayor and council? Okay. Seeing no one, I shall close public comment. Oh, one... Okay, I was just about to adjourn, but I have one more thing. The administrator, Mr. Smith, he's going to bring us up to speed on a conversation he had with the police chief concerning our Zoom bombing. So, if you could please tell us? Bob? Oh, stand by, Mayor.
All right.
All right, thank you.
I think I'm good now.
I hear you.
I apologize for that. So, during the intermission, Councilman Dowhan had asked if something could be done about the hacking and the bombing of our meeting. And unbeknownst to me at the time, Chief Shutter and Captain Palmer were already on it. They had communicated with the Cape May County Prosecutor's Office. They have opened an investigation into the incident. And they're actually considering it because of the content and because of what was said. They're actually considering it a potential bias crime. And so, rest assured that the county prosecutor's office is aware of it. They're looking at it. As I had mentioned, with this type of offense, it's often very difficult, particularly if somebody is using a dark web server or a secret server where you cannot identify the IP address. It's difficult to identify the perpetrators. Even if perpetrators were able to be identified, they might be clearly outside of extradition laws, for example, or jurisdiction of Cape May County, state of New Jersey in the United States. But nevertheless, it is being investigated, and hopefully, we'll be able to make progress in that regard.
Thank you, Bob. Good work by the police getting right on it.
Yeah.
Okay, so, I need a motion to adjourn.
Mayor?
Yes.
I have a motion to approve the bill list, please.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Mayor, that's why you missed it.
That... Oh, it's not in the plate. See? I need my hand held. I need a motion approving the bill list.
Madam Mayor, I move that we approve the bill list and authorize the CFO to pay the bills as the point in time which the vouchers are duly authorized.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Now, may I have a motion to adjourn?
I make a motion...
I'm making a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Second.
All in favor?
Amen.
Aye.
Adjourn. Stay healthy and stay safe.
Thank you.